Called to order, the meeting of the Shaftesbury Select Board for Martin Luther King Day, Monday, January 21st, 2013. Couple of things before we get into announcements. Oh, man. Excuse me.
That's one of them.
That's a first. Start off with a real juicy one.
Oh, just.
Okay, so we started the meeting at six o'clock because the Fire Chief is concerned about the, some conditions of both of the firehouses, the one on Depot Road and the one on Buckhill Road, and so the Select Board went out there to look at the condition of the two buildings and some of the repairs that need to be made to the structure, and the Fire Chief's going to be getting back to us with some proposed budgets for doing some of the work based on the priorities that he thinks the department should have for keeping the buildings in good repair and weather tight. I just did want to comment on the one thing. It's readily apparent that the fire crew, the fire company, is taking meticulous care of the equipment that we have. All the trucks were in spectacular condition. And so I wanted to thank the fire company and the chief and the assistant chiefs for doing such a great job maintaining the equipment. That's so important. Okay, announcements, Billy?
No, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy Martin Luther King Day and say that while we're sitting here on a national holiday, I think this is a great moment for us to take a look at our own local government and the times that we have what appears to be moments of conflict and adversarial conversation and think about where we would be as a nation if Dr. King hadn't been willing to have those conversations himself.
So, thank you, Billy. Carl?
I'd also like to note that not only is it Martin Luther King Day, but it is the day of the inauguration of our 44th President Barack Obama, and I hope that everyone had an opportunity either to actually see it live or on the news. It is a celebration for every one of us that we live in a nation that has a change of government peacefully and celebrates that. And I know it's a unique type of thing that if you have it and you experience it all the time, you can easily take it for granted, but when you take a look at what's going on in the world, it does not suddenly be taken for granted. And we have to thank our troops who have given their lives and their all and their families to allow this to occur, and I'd like to express my gratitude to every one of them and wish our President the very, very best for the next four years for us as well.
Thank you, Carl. Karen?
You're here. Well, I completely agree with both of the statements.
Margie?
No announcements.
Okay. Does any member of the public wish to make any statement on any issue that's not on the agenda? Okay. Does any member of the board have a conflict of interest with any item on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. Okay. The first issue deals with the proposed budget. On the, I think it was the 17th, we had a special Select Board meeting to finish the work on the budget. And this year, the budget has been approved, and without taking into consideration the bond for, that's going to be up for vote for constructing the Newtown Garage, the expenditures on the budget have been decreased by 1.4%. It's a relatively small amount, about $27,000, but the board was determined to keep expenses as close to last year as possible, or the current year as possible. And the amount to be raised by taxes is not going to increase. It's a 0%. The difference in the amount to be raised in the proposed fiscal year 2014 is about $260 less than was raised for the current fiscal year. So, without considering the bond issue, taxes are going to remain the same this year. Last year was a very negligible increase as well, and to be candid, the reason for that was the board understands, you know, the consequences of the school tax, but at the same time, it's been working very hard to make the construction of the Newtown Garage and the sand and salt shed and the pole barn feasible for the community. So, we'll get into that in more detail. The issue that the board needs to decide is the question of whether or not we should propose the cost of the bond for fiscal year 2014 in the current budget. And we've actually gotten advice from two different sources. One was from Bob Drew at the Bond Bank, and then we got the same advice from the Bond Council that we've hired, is it John Facy? And he suggests that it not be included in the budget because we don't know if it's going to be approved, but that we make sure both at the informational meeting and in the materials that the board distributes on the cost of the project, what that would do to the budget in terms of the tax rate and the actual anticipated cost. So, I didn't want to, you know, Margie and I talked about the issue, what should we do with it, because we're putting this together at the same time we've got to get a proposed budget to the auditors for printing. I wanted to know what the board's feeling, where should we include it in the budget or leave it out and make sure our materials are clear as to what it will do to the overall budget if it's approved. What's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I mean, my, I think, I think we certainly can make it very clear. I mean, I think this is going to be probably the biggest, one of the biggest topics of town meeting. I hope it could be. And I know that we're planning to get, in addition to the report that we put into the town report, an informational flyer. I think we should do, we need to do that, we all want to do that, out to the community. As I look at it, the impact, if the town chose, you know, to support this, would be less than a penny on the tax rate. And I think it, I think it maybe makes sense to keep it all together. Because if we, I mean, if we put it in the budget, we still, I don't know, I just think it gets a little more complicated and a little, I think it's more transparent, frankly, for the voters. If they, if we can identify what this project cost is going to be, what the impact would be on the tax rate, should they decide to approve it, I'd just rather keep it all together. I think it just makes it easier for them to understand the project and the impact that it's going to have.
So, put it in the budget or not?
I would say not put it in the budget.
Not.
I would say not.
Okay, and then just make sure all the materials about the bond clearly spell out the dollars that are involved and what that would do to the tax rate.
Yeah. That's, that's my feeling. I just think it keeps it cleaner.
Okay. Carl?
I would agree. I, after reading the explanation given, it makes perfectly good sense to me that we don't want to put it in until we know that it actually is there. And as Karen noted, we must get out additional information to the public so that they understand more than just the dollar and what it's for, but of some substance. And I think that the explanation as to why it's not in the budget would be in there. So, I would agree with Karen basically.
Okay.
I agree for the reasons already expressed.
Okay. Okay. I don't think we need a vote on this. I just think we need a direction to make sure that we continue to work towards transparency. Okay, so we'll do that, and then I wanted to get the board's permission to, there are some older line items in the budget that have not been used in several years, and so what I want to do with it is to eliminate those, get the board's permission for Margie to eliminate those lines that are no longer in use.
Can you let us know what they are?
Yeah, well, two of them are state tax refund per state and...
If you could give us a line item, it'd be a lot easier to find.
Okay, 10 and 11. I sent a note to Margie today to just follow up because we do show some actual for...
There is, and that's a good number.
Right, but a decision a while ago had been to report those monies as current tax revenue rather than separately as due taxpayer from state account. So...
So, for the sake of just a report, we want to make sure that Bill puts, we're going to increase that actual current tax revenue and show it in there and delete the line?
Yes. Because those are monies that are paid on behalf of the taxpayer to the town under the, what is it, Act 68 and Act 60 with the rebates and to make property taxes affordable. So, we...
Is it like the homesteading payments?
Well, the homestead rate is one thing, but if a person has, is of low income, the state will pay a portion of their property tax for them, and if we collect the money first from the taxpayer and then they get, they're entitled to the rebate, we pay back the taxpayer the amount that the state paid for them. So, what we had done for a while was to report the school tax refund for the state and then the amounts due the taxpayer from the state account as separate line items. And then based on advice, I think, from the auditors and PLCT, we just started reporting those as all current taxes.
So, are you suggesting they're revenue neutral? Is that why you're removing them?
Removing them because we don't use them. We don't use those line items anymore. But my understanding is that all of those funds coming from the state to pay property taxes are being reported as current tax revenue.
Well, how did, how did we get the $18,249? Did we get that from Bill?
Yeah, I, yes, I have an income. It was at a state.
He's not separating them and then...
Right, so I'm, I've got a note to Bill asking him if he's going to, if he wants to report it that way or to continue, to continue the practice we had just started a couple of years ago, which is reporting them as current tax revenue.
He saw that this afternoon.
And the purpose is just to clean it up a little bit or...
Yeah, and to simplify what we show the taxpayers because, you know, there's a number of lines, if you could go down into the expenses. There's some items like professional lotto we'll keep in there because we're going to have that expense from time to time, but, let's see.
You know, one other line that I was curious about, because I know we've gotten reimbursement, is line 31, fire reimbursement fees.
In prior years.
I know we have actuals on that. I know that we have a designated fund for that to go into. You know, we could, the board committed that when we bill, when the fire company bills insurance companies, if there's an accident, say, in the insurance company, and they're damaged extrication tools, just as an example, they can send in a claim, and if we get reimbursement back from the insurance company, that money goes into a fund for the replacement of that kind of equipment. But I'm not seeing any actuals on this.
We haven't had any actuals reported for the first six months.
Well, we did last year. We had some last year. Remember you talking, okay, anyway.
Yeah. Do you have any, do you have any in the town report, by the way?
I just think we need to be sure, because does that come into them, to the fire company?
It goes into the reserve.
No, it goes into the reserve.
Okay.
But it should report, be reported as current income.
Okay, so I'm just...
Another line is 347, storm damage at the parks. Basically, that just comes under... Maintenance or capital improvements.
Yeah, yeah.
We haven't used that line item in a long time.
Yeah, I don't have a problem taking that.
Another one was the George Aiken Fund that disappeared last year.
What line number is that on?
409.
And that disappeared and it's not coming back, is it?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we do have one year, never mind. That one will come out the next year.
What we could do, Lon, what we could do is delete that, but take the hun, the, for this report, take the FY12 budget and actuals and put those down under the Northern Vermont RCD.
I don't think we can do that because, no.
No, it came in under the George Aiken.
Yeah.
I think we need to keep it for another year.
Even though it's the same organization.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, perhaps we could, if we're keeping it this year under George Aiken, where we have merged into new organization as a note.
I'll do that.
Yeah.
Yep. Wanted to take out the line items that had to do with the deficit reduction.
And can you give us a number?
I used to be...
We still have that in here.
They're out.
You took that out, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I don't know that we agreed to that. I think I just pulled them. I want to make sure everybody's okay with that, because that's been, that's not showing up in 11. And given the fund balance...
That's a long, long time ago.
It's not likely to be needed.
Those were the dark days.
Yeah.
Are we, what about the tree warden budget?
Um...
That's three lines, four lines.
Yeah, I, we still have to elect a tree warden.
Mm-hmm.
And...
What line, can, can you give a... Lines 308 through 311.
I, I think we leave it in there. At some point, it'd be nice to do something with that. Oh, the 332, the state landfill tax. That disappeared when we kept the landfill.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that could come out.
And the Norsha for the league, are we leaving that in versus two?
We should because they received an appropriation in 2000, fiscal year 2011. Sage City at 423 could probably come out because they were, they were not successful last year and they did not make a request this year.
And is line 347, also identified as elimination, storm danger repair?
I beg your pardon?
Line 347 says line item to be eliminated.
Yep, that's the one we just talked about.
Sage City is not in there.
They're at line 423.
Not in the most recent version that you sent.
Okay.
As approved, in the version you sent, but they approved, but they'd already taken it in.
And that's about it, I think. Oh, the landfill reserve fund, I guess we have to leave that in there as long as we've got it.
Yeah, we still have something in there.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, 466 and 467 were the deficit reduction lines.
Actually, you know what? Excuse me, I apologize. Do, do we need to keep it in there? Well, I guess we do have every one of our reserve funds, no, we don't have every one of our reserve funds in here.
No, we don't.
I don't, I just, we have a, we have a balance sheet on that, so I don't think we need that in there. The landfill reserve fund. I, we're not going to ask the people to, for money in the, in the future, so...
Is that okay? Billy, Carl?
Yeah.
Okay, but the other two lines are 466 and 467 about deficit reduction that we...
Those are already gone from the final version.
They're gone. They're not in here.
Okay. That's about it.
So, will you be speaking to Bill about lines 10 and 11?
Mm-hmm, yeah. If he wants to keep them, then I'm not going to change those. I wouldn't recommend changing them.
He was talking about maybe changing the label for line 11.
Okay.
As a way to make that known.
Specific.
Specific, yeah.
And understandable.
As to what the state calls the actual payment.
Okay. And 10, he was thinking about two.
Talking about that line on.
All right. Okay.
I think he just, yeah, he just credits that. Will we get a refund? You know, it goes either way.
Right.
So, he just credits what's owed. So, it is, in one sense, he is posting after current tax revenues, place that about.
Okay, well, we'll wait, we'll wait to hear from him. We've got a couple more days.
Lon, before we get off of the budget, because we approved this, I think, not at a, not at a public, not at a televised meeting, I mean, it might be beneficial just to read some of the numbers. I mean, normally, we would have...
Sure.
...made a motion to approve, you know, expenses in a, you know, a budget of a certain amount, and it might be good to give folks a comparison.
All right. All right, so the amount to be raised by taxes for fiscal year 2014, which begins July I don't want to look at the December draft, that would be hair-raising. At that point, it was a 12% increase.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, the amount to be raised by taxes is $1,302,258. Compared to the current year was almost exactly the same, because this year we raised, the amount we levied as taxes was $1,302,614. So, as I indicated earlier, the difference is about $360. The total revenues for this budget from fees, money paid to the state and the high, state aid for highways and payments in lieu of taxes and other fees makes the total revenues to be spent $1,854,628. That compares to $1,882,771. So, we're actually raising 1.5% less in revenues. In terms of fees, such as dog licenses, access to the transfer station, access permits, page of throw fees, zoning permit fees and the like, those are all staying exactly the same. So, there'll be no increase in other charges to citizens for town services. We didn't feel a need to raise any new revenue through those sources. State police fines have been steadily on the decline, so we have less revenue there. The sheriff fines that they've levied, the town sheriff, that has remained roughly the same from year to year with slight variation. So, the other thing is that we'll get a little bit more money from the employees because the health insurance carrier, I believe it's Blue Cross and Blue Shield, is that correct? Has requested a 9.4% or 9.3% increase in their premiums. The employees' portion of the premium will remain the same, but because the premium is probably going to go up, they're going to have to pay more towards their own health insurance costs. The state has not approved the increase as yet, and so we've got to adopt the budget assuming that the state's going to approve the full 9.4%.
And it might be worth adding that the share that they pay is 14% of the premium of the employees.
Right. The other item is that in working with Bill Fisk, the treasurer, we learned that we had accumulated a fund balance over a number of years that was approximately $320,000, and we've been carrying this fund balance from year to year. With the ebb and flow of, you know, tax money in and then expenses out, especially at the beginning of the year when we have most of our big payments, it was sort of difficult to tell just looking at the balance sheet what our actual cash reserves were. So, when we saw that, we were concerned that we were holding too much money in reserve and therefore taxing the, you know, the property owners too much. So, the treasurer took a look at how much should be maintained in reserve and then how much of that should be spent down so that we're not holding too much cash in reserve. And he said that holding an amount between 10 and 15% was appropriate. So, of the 300, approximately $320,000 fund balance at the end of the last fiscal year, that we should apply $120,000 of that to reduce current taxes. That would leave us a little over 11%, 11 and a half percent. That would leave us a little over eleven percent, eleven and a half percent of our current proposed budget as a reserve to meet unexpected expenditures, emergencies, and to help us sort of maintain appropriate cash flow with town monies and reduce the amount we actually have to borrow. So based on the treasurer's recommendation, we're going to use a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of the fund balance, that is cash on hand, to reduce the amount to be raised by taxes. I should note that sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of that fund balance was surplus accumulated last year. The department heads, the town administrator, and the elected officials were very vigilant on how they spent money, and pretty much everybody lived within their budgets. We had better-than-expected revenues from the town, so we were able to end the year on a positive note. It's a little less than four percent of the overall budget, so ending with a surplus sixty-seven thousand dollars sounds like a lot when you have a budget of a million, seven hundred thousand dollars. It's a relatively small amount to end in the black, but it's still a lot more comfortable than.
It's the right color.
Being in the red. So we're very pleased with that. In terms of the expenses, the key things on the budget that we're trying to accomplish this year are, we had allocated sixteen hours a week for administrative support for the town administrator, and we hired one part-time person who is doing bookkeeping services and has been very productive and very valuable. But that person's work is limited to bookkeeping, and it's about nine to ten hours a week. So we didn't fully expend the sixteen hours that we had planned for. So for the proposed budget, we would like Margie to work closer to a forty-hour week, not the fifty or sixty-hour week that we regularly see her working. And if we're including in this budget another part-time person about nine hours a week to do administrative tasks related to, say, the transfer station, the posting of public notices, and some other routine administrative tasks that basically take the town administrator away from issues that require judgment and expertise and experience. So that's something new in this budget. We've included in a couple of departments increases in technical support, IT services, computer support, in a couple of different areas. One is the listers would like to go to digital mapping. That will provide for more accuracy in having a digital map system, and they're looking at a couple of different types of systems. We're also looking at trying to integrate the work of the listers more closely with the other departments, like the zoning administrator, the town clerk, and the town administrator, because certain functions of the listers overlap with functions of the town clerk and the land records and with the zoning administrator. So now that we have a network that integrates all these departments, with some more training and a little bit more software, we can more fully integrate them so everybody's work is more efficient and people have access to information through the computer rather than coming upstairs, say, looking through cards or going downstairs into the vault to look through the land records. It will just make everybody's work more accurate and efficient. So we've included some additional money there. Plus, we're starting to use the town website more dynamically. We'd like to have all of the town's policies and ordinances on the website so that people can look up those things that they may need information about. We've gotten to the point where the amount of work it takes to keep up the town's website is more than the volunteer time we can get. So there are a couple of services in the area. Billy's talked with one service provider, and for a reasonable monthly fee, we should be able to have a pretty dynamic website. I'll give you an example of why I think this is valuable. If you were to go to the SVSU website and want to look at the teachers' collective bargaining agreement, see what a teacher's rights were, you can just go on their website and look up the collective bargaining agreement and find out what the policies and procedures are. If we put our personnel policies on our website, any employee from home could go to our website and say, you know, "I've got this issue coming up," or "That issue," you know, "What are the rules?" So there are lots of ways like that that we could improve how we operate. Some towns have their listers' cards, property descriptions that the listers take for valuing property available through the internet because it's all public record. You could come into the office and look up what your neighbor's properties are assessed at for tax purposes just through your computer, and the benefit of that is you can determine whether you're being fairly assessed through that type of research. That's not something we're going to do this year, but that's what we're working towards, is to make more public records more easily accessible. But first, we've got to sort of put the building blocks in place so that all of the departments can work together effectively. We have a couple of large equipment purchases coming up. The nineteen eighty-eight Caterpillar excavator, the manufacturer no longer makes parts for that piece of equipment, and it's getting more and more expensive to keep it operating and find the parts. So that's a piece of equipment we're looking to replace, and we're scheduled to replace one of the highway department trucks. We found that if we finance two truck purchases instead of one, we can get a much more favorable interest rate somewhere in the, historically, we've gotten what, about two point four, two point five percent financing on combination purchase, or combination financing. We buy the trucks and the chassis and the bodies separately from different companies, but one bank will finance the whole package. And when we put two trucks into the financing package, we get a better rate than if we did, we financed them separately. So the excavator, and I believe there's one truck coming up in this budget, that will be replaced. I can't think of anything else to cover. We've gotten, the appropriations are very close to the same, within eight hundred dollars. Couple I'd like to point out, North Shaft Little League no longer exists. It's been merged into the Bennington Little League, and the Bennington Little League has made an appropriation request that's the same as what the North Shaft Little League used to request. So you're going to see a new one on there for the Bennington Little League, and we hope the voters don't get confused that now Bennington is asking for more money in addition to North Shaft. And they just need to know North Shaft is now a part of the Bennington League again, that if they want to fund youth baseball, then they do need to vote in favor of the Bennington Little League appraisal, or appropriation. The other one is Northern Vermont RC&amp;D, used to be known as the George Aiken Fund. It's the oddest thing because they asked for an appropriation of a hundred dollars. And the purpose of the hundred dollars, I think, is to show that they're broadly supported by the communities in Vermont. The George Aiken Fund, now Northern Vermont RC&amp;D, is actually a funding agency, a grant agency, where they give grants to towns like ours to do things like construct dry hydrants. Dry hydrants, basically, a pipe that goes into a pond, comes to a stand, you know, that the fire trucks can plug into and they can pump directly out of the pond that way without having to run lines into the pond and send guys into the pond and all that. It makes for quick hookups and quick filling of the pumper trucks for fire suppression. We get far more money from Northern Vermont RC&amp;D than we've ever paid them in appropriations. So I.
Well, it's, I mean, it's interesting that one dry hydrant grant can be worth four thousand dollars. I mean, we've gotten a number of them, and it's a shame, I'm not sure that it's been a very long time since the community has supported George Aiken, or, you know, this is now, they have a new name, but.
In two thousand and twelve, they did get an appropriation.
Was it voted?
Yep, and two thousand and thirteen, the name changed to Northern Vermont RC&amp;D, and it went down big time.
Yeah, so people maybe didn't know about it, didn't understand it, but it's, you know, if you want to talk about bang for your buck, it's right in that appropriation.
Yeah. The other new one is the Turning Point Center of Bennington, which provides services to teenagers and young adults who have problems with alcohol or drugs, trying to help them maintain their sobriety and change their lives. It's right on Main Street, near the bookstore and the spectacle shop. It's quite active, and they serve members of our community. And I think that's about it. So the budget's almost flat at a million, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
It's actually down one point four percent.
Yep. Yeah, virtually flat. Okay, any questions about the budget? The number is one million, eight hundred, fifty-four thousand, six twenty-eight. It's a decrease in spending of one point four percent, and it results in a zero percent increase in taxes. So no increase in taxes this year. The Turning Point? The Turning Point Center of Bennington. Okay. New Town Garage, Jim?
Evening. Not much to really tell from the last time we were here, basically on target to have the estimates. To have the estimates ready for writing some notes to the town. And Margie'd ask.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, since we have some different people here, Jim, and it doesn't take too long, could you just walk folks through what the general plan is? And do you want me to hold that for you?
Sorry, I was standing in front of you. Basically, we're looking at a new town garage structure at the landfill site. Come down, this is the access road now, come down through a small plateau area and property that's already owned by the town. It'll consist of approximately nine thousand square foot garage facility, which will have a small repair bay, offices, meeting rooms, a salt shed that's fifty by sixty, so they can mix in, also, it's to be bootlegged and covered for stormwater requirements, and an open storage shed that'll give them an area for dry storage for equipment. It'll also accommodate large pipe storage for the water department. Pretty straightforward. We're looking at a one-story building, conventional construction, onsite watering, so we're just closing.
My show in the garage.
Oh, you gotta answer that question. The building itself, the main facility, of course, the garage structure, office space, bathrooms, locker room, meeting room, there's office also for the water department. The small repair bay here, that's about sixty by twenty-five, another area for smaller vehicles, a larger area for the larger trucks, a small mezzanine for storage and mechanical space, a pin-floor rating heat, zoned in for different sections. Looking at high energy insulation for, to keep the cost down for the overall long-term, concrete floor, wood framing, salt grubs, so it'll fit into the siding or, you know, natural conditions in the area, so it's not going to stick out.
Okay, do folks have any questions about the plan? Okay. Thanks, Jim. Okay. So we'll be on target for Friday for the post-class.
Yep. We're planning, I think, a four-thirty meeting with the facility.
We had just had some communication about a four-thirty meeting, and I just sent a note to the facility committee representative, and I didn't know, I can't imagine it was a special select board meeting, but it's always up to what the board would like to do. The full board presentation is Monday.
Yeah, I think we should know this, so we can, who wants to be here can be, and if we happen to have a form, we, we, we have the notice form.
Yeah. I'm going to try to give you a couple, not major alternatives, but a couple of different ideas and stuff that I have to make a decision on to get the final number together.
Yeah, so there is, there are a couple of questions to answer and talk about.
Okay. I've got to get our budget notes together, so I'm going to need that number after we get the, after we get the number. So that's kind of a real good one.
Oh, theoretically, you're going to see, I mean, the basic building number is going to be this, and we're going to give you a couple of alternatives and some line items on some of the major components that you can make some decisions. Hopefully, that day, we can just strike them out. We'll have a total number that we walk off at night.
What time are you proposing? Four thirty?
Four thirty.
Four thirty.
I didn't know if that'd be better later in the afternoon for people, and that gives us until four thirty, you get done.
If that was for you, that's fine with me. Does anything need to be, Billy, or do you have a question?
Where will we meet on site?
Me here, right?
Oh, me here.
Right here.
Okay.
I think that's good. I mean, I think the public is hearing about it. We're, you know, if there's anyone out there that is interested in coming to that meeting, I think that would be great.
Then the other piece we have to do, Jim, is to get mailing out to the public, both what we intend to do and why we've gotten to this point in terms of why we've determined a need for this new facility. So will we have time Friday to mail down some of those?
I think a lot of, well, the preliminary work should be, don't you already have that from your facilities committee?
We've, yeah, I've got a lot of, depending on what you want, we've got a lot of the backup documentation that we've done in the last two years.
that we've done in the last two years.
I think the part they helped us out on is the-
Oh, yeah. We'll, we'll give you, in that, that meeting, we're going to have an overall description of each one of the buildings and what's going on with the site, in a verbal description. And then, we'll give you the costing numbers, so they'll be broken out by divisions, and then we're going to give you another list of allowances and alternates that you guys can kind of say yes or no. And I want to bullet some major items in there to make sure that you're aware of some of the costs, too.
Right. We want to be able to answer questions from the public.
Yep. I think there's, you will have quite a bit of data on, we'll put it together.
Okay.
And then, I'll have our costing sheets here, you know, in our hands, though, if you say, "Well, what about this item?", and we'll pull it apart and we can show, we can pull that number out pretty quick.
Yep.
You know, it may be, Lon, that we're, in terms of what goes into the town report, will probably not be as extensive or as detailed in terms of the specific plan. I don't know. But I think that's the benefit of doing an informational mailing, because we'll have, frankly, you know, what we get to the people, I don't want it rushed. I think, you know, the more information that they can have in terms of the actual project, I think the better, so.
Well, maybe what I can do, if I can email Margie, maybe on Thursday, kind of a description, overall verbal description, like it's nine thousand square foot of building, this is the type of construction, this is how many square foot of this and that.
Yes.
I mean, we could put that together pretty quick. And I can work with Jeff on that, and then we'll say, "This is what the salt shed will consist of, this is what the storage building will consist of, this is what the whole site will consist of."
That would be very helpful.
And that wouldn't, I wouldn't mail it out on Thursday, I mean, we need to edit it on Friday.
No, no, no. No. That would be, that would be really helpful, I think.
At least, if everybody can take a look at it.
Because the first week of February, we'll probably be working through some drafts.
Yep.
So, that would give us a base.
Yeah. And that way, when you walk in on Friday, you're sitting there saying, "Oh, okay, well, now I understand what..." And we've talked about it, but nobody's really seen it, other than a picture, or really seen it, right?
Are we, you know, again, and I know that we have a very imminent deadline for the auditors to get this into the town report, and I'm just wondering what the plan was, are we, and I saw you hand Margie a small sketch, is that something that-
Oh, she just asked for those, yeah.
Well, we had thought there was going to be a two-page text with, then we thought maybe reduced plans.
Right.
Or preliminary layouts might work.
Yeah. And I guess that's what we need to sort of flesh out, is what is actually going into the report.
Nobody can read that.
I know, I know. That's-
So, I'm wondering, I think the site plan is more visually appreciated, at least my eyes can read it, on here. You have good close-up vision, but you can't, nobody could even read, unfortunately, the overall dimensions, so I don't know if that's going to be useful.
It could be expanded. This here, the footprint fairly close to page.
Oh, I mean, that drawing right there is what you're seeing. Basically, it's shrunk.
There should be a way to draw this out.
Well, we can modify the dimensions if you want, if you want to mark it up the way you, you know, you want this outside footprint dimension, you want a bigger description in certain areas, if you want to redline something, we could probably edit it pretty quick.
No, it was just a-
But, I mean, there's more information possibly in there than you need.
Yeah.
Let me ask a question, Lon. On Friday, when we meet, and assuming we have a quorum, assuming we get the numbers that are proposed for the entire project, are we planning to, at that point, know how much money we're going to be asking for the bond, or are we still going to have to decide how much money we will have to put in from the duck bath from the cost?
Monday will have to decide, make those decisions.
Monday what?
Monday will be making those decisions.
We have to have a warning, we have to, you know, put the warning out to the people.
Yeah.
I thought we were going to be doing that for Friday meetings, no idea?
No, not the-
Friday we're going to get the information in terms of the cost of the project and the alternates that he prescribed. And basically, it's the day we do our homework, and then Monday, we're going to have to make a decision as to what we put in the warning, because the warning is too bold. It most shows what's going to transpire Monday night at town meeting, and also what's going to be on the ballot the next day for us to vote.
So, if people show up at our meeting on Friday, as you've invited the town, they'll hear what the cost of the project will be, but not what the cost, or how much we will be borrowing for the project.
We're borrowing about a hundred percent.
That's my question.
Yeah.
I thought you-
But we're going to be doing some-
So, if they find, if the public shows up on Friday, and they find that it is X dollars to build the project-
In total.
In total.
After we have our-
They can assume that that will be the amount of the bond that will be secured.
Yes.
Pretty close, yeah. Because we're going to do some site work for the crew, but, but those are going to be smaller numbers compared to the overall cost of the project. So, it, it may not be exactly the amount, but it will be very close.
I just want to make sure the public understands what they might find out if they show up on Friday.
Yep. Yep. That's good.
And what we'll be giving you, though, on our pricing matrix, is we're going to exclude town-supported projects, but I'll give you an idea what that dollar figure would be if you didn't support that. Does that make sense?
You mean with the, just for the sake of the audience, the site work that we're planning to have the town crew do to save us money? That's what you're talking about?
Yeah. The town's planning to do the clearing, grubbing, putting the access road in, culvert, basically shaping the site within plus or minus twelve inches, so the contractor walks in and it's all his, and he's all set to start building. Yep.
And well, so you're going to have that assigned as additional cost?
I've already got that as a price.
You already got that in?
Yep. Yeah. Well, and septic, so it's going to be in.
And then the permitting cost, can that be done without any, any other professionals? You guys can be running that.
Yep. Yep. But then, well, we'll, basically, the only big permit cost is going to be the building permit for the state of Vermont. And that's based on construction costs.
The general, etc., the-
Construction general.
I mean, stormwater?
No, the state permit.
It's your building permit. Is that what you mean? Well, you've got, you've got the agency natural resources permit for the water and sewer, then you've got the building permit for the state, there'll be a small stormwater fee. And then, the two trades, the plumbing and electrical, have to pick up their own permits, that's, that's normal, because those trades have to pull a permit, they have to be licensed to pull that permit from the state. But we can get the building permit. And on that, it's based on construction costs, but we'll put that a little lower, because we don't have the bids, but you end up just paying up the difference if it goes over that, what you estimated at the end of the job, they ask for a reappraisal on it.
I thought the cover did last something.
Nope.
It was a multi-sector general-
Well, that's what you've already got, we're just going to be transferring that to the site, we'll just help Margie with that. That's more of a housekeeping permit kind of thing. You've already got one with a new site, you just move it from this site over to that site. So, I don't believe there's any permitting fees involved with that, is there, Margie? That's normally done by the operator, so I haven't really done one. We've assisted in them, but we haven't really formally done them. But I think that's just a matter of transferring this permit over to that site at the time of completion. You should be under an MSG permit already.
You don't want the nineteen sixty-three code in?
That doesn't, it's, it's a housekeeping, it's not, it's not structure, it's how you load the trucks, it's how you store materials, that kind of stuff. Yeah. Yeah. So, in our case, you'll be basically getting less of a permit, because you've got more stuff covered and protected from the stormwater issues.
Any questions for Jim?
No. Great. I do.
Okay. Next item is the sequel letter from the North Coast Lions Club regarding the questions about security at Howard Park. Make some improvements to the park if the steps can be taken, picture the music, thanks Art, we need allies to destroy. Art, do you want to talk with us about that, or?
Did you get, did you get, Art had sent us all a memo. The Lions had presented, had come back in June, we all remember, but for the sake of those who are listening, and one of the concerns was that they, and they have been wonderful in the past, and were, you know, critical help in the improvements over Cleveland Park. We have a skating rink over there, thanks to the Lions, and we have a warming shed that a young man built through his Eagle project with help from the Lions Club. And they had come forward and said that they would like to help to make some improvements at Howard Park, but there was a concern about some vandalism. And rightfully, they didn't want to be putting good money into the park with the concern that their, you know, that work would be vandalized. So, I had gotten back in touch with Art and let him know that the board had discussed the situation at the parks, the rec committee had talked about it. You know, I think, as everyone remembers, one of our dilemmas is that we have a gate down to Howard Park, and for years, we had a, the person who was the chair of the rec committee lived fairly closely to the park, actually took it upon himself every day to open the gate and lock the gate at the end of the day. In fact, he took the trash every day and brought it to the transfer station. We were very lucky, and that person couldn't continue to do it, and that ended about four or five years ago. We haven't been lucky in finding anyone, we have not been successful in finding anyone that could take that on. We did have someone who was volunteering to close it at times this year. The rec committee did talk with the sheriff's department, and they do go down and patrol, we have them for a certain number of hours each week, and when they're in town, that's one of the things that they, they do. They did, we did talk about the sheriff's department, what would be involved in them actually securing the park, if we could get someone to open it in the morning, secure it at night. The issue at night is that you don't want to lock anyone down. And it's also, for some folks, many folks, it's, you know, a little bit dicey to think about driving down there at dusk and locking, looking to be sure there's no one around there, and then come up and lock the gate. So, we talked to the sheriff's about doing that, the charge is significant, you know, as we know, it's over twenty-five dollars an hour that they charge. Sheriff, the sheriff did say that he thought he could find someone to do it, it would probably be a hundred and twenty-five dollars a week. So, the rec committee did discuss this, and the board talked about it, and one of the things that we ended up determining was that we need somebody that really can, right now, we have a park superintendent who is only seasonal. And the thought was, if we turn that into a full-year position and increase the hours basically to the amount that right now we pay unemployment insurance, because we have someone that leaves, obviously, that's the way the job has been, they leave, and then there's an unemployment cost, and then our superintendent comes back again in the spring. So, the thought was, if we extended it throughout the year, and rather than putting that money into unemployment, we put it into the salary, and took a look at the hours and how it's utilized, and tried to have a system where the park superintendent is responsible for opening and closing the gate, for keeping an eye in terms of maintenance down there, and if there are issues during the winter. We looked at the number of incidents that we had had, we did have a problem when the storage building was put up by the monument soccer group. It was a brand-new building, and we had, we don't know, we were sitting with these kids, maybe, but jimmy the lock, and damaged the door frame. And Monument came in and repaired that, and I believe I'm correct in saying, the majority of our vandalism down there has been in the form of property damage with kids driving over the lawn, driving through the parking area, throwing stones up, which causes a problem with laundry, you know, and our park superintendent, who is very diligent in taking care of the place, you know, it damages the blades, obviously. So, those are the issues we've been dealing with. We do have, and I think I had mentioned it, Art, I know that there had been concern about the skating rink and the warming hut. Again, we have a problem with volunteers, and sometimes, the more equipment you have, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it can almost be as wonderful as it is, you have to figure out how you're going to take care of it, who's going to put it up, who's going to take it down. We've been very lucky in that we, the road crew has been very helpful and has stepped forward in those incidents. We've, I think it was last year, they actually took the skating rink, helped us take it down, and it was Terry, our foreman's idea to actually store it in the warming hut, and he put wood frames over the front of it to protect it. He was concerned, the year before, we had it stored down at the transfer station, and it really was in the open. We covered it as best we could, but, so, we've gotten a lot of help from the road group. I think they are very aware of the town property and want to be helpful in caring for it. So, it's not a perfect system, and we have vandalism at times, you know, it's, I don't think it's anything we can't, you know, that we can guarantee it won't happen. But we're hoping with the additional hours that we're putting towards the superintendent's position, we have put money into a reserve fund for, for the park. It actually, we started last year, it was, you know, when Howard Park was first set up, there was almost a covenant at that time that was made with the people in order to get folks to contribute towards an endowment fund, that the townspeople would never incur, there would never be a tax cost in terms of the parks. The reality was, this is a reserve fund of around, I think it's maybe ninety thousand dollars or so. We get a very limited amount, with interest rates being what they are in the more recent past, it's very, very minimal. So, I think it's this board, since I've been sitting on the board, it's the first time, I think that we've actually had to go to the community and say, "If you want your parks," and people do, "We need some revenue to support them." We had hoped to begin a capital campaign for the parks, and honestly, it, the economic environment just did not seem to be suited for it. That's still there in terms of, you know, a plan that we have. We've been trying to figure out, when is the best time to go out? So, what we did do was, you know, begin to try to get the actual figures out to the community in terms of what the cost is, and even with that, it's fairly minimal. I mean, we don't pay our park superintendent, you know, you all know who it is, and he's a great guy, and he does it for very little. And, you know, I think it's, it's, it's a wonderful thing. But, so that's, that's where we are. And, you know, I'm certainly hopeful, and I think I can speak for the rec committee, and, you know, board members are here to speak for themselves, that I can't say enough about the Lions, and how much effort they have put in to the town and the parks, you know, the whole, our Christmas celebration here was, you know, in large part because of the efforts of the Lions Club. So, you know, if there are other things that you think that we can, can do, I mean, ultimately, it's, it's always about money. It's all- It's always about money. And we're trying to strike a balance in terms of, you know, going to the taxpayers and getting volunteers.
Okay. Karl?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Karl?
I remember this conversation last year. And at the time, I made a suggestion identifying what I know is done in national parks. National parks also have problems with their finances. They don't get funded that much by Congress. And those national parks typically have something known as a resident docent at the park. What that typically is, is a retired couple who sign a waiver of liability, and they park their camper at the park location, and they act as, if you will, greeters for people coming in. And if there's an issue with something that happens with other people that are attending that park, they go to that docent. The docent then contacts requisite authority. It would seem to me that we are well-located to perhaps be of interest to people that would be willing to park their trailer there, responsible people, who would oversee the park in exchange for the right to stay there. And granted, that might not be a full-time situation, but certainly during the summer. And as, quite frankly, what they would do is, in the national parks, they'll open gates and close gates and be the eyes of that particular agency. That doesn't cost money. And it is something, if we're concerned about money, that I think is a reasonable thing to at least make inquiry into. And I would throw out that suggestion one more time.
Well, you know, I remember when you brought that up and, you know, just thinking about it again, I guess, who do you get in touch with? Do you get in touch with the Vermont State Parks? And I'm not quite sure, but I think it's a great idea if we could find the right people.
Well, I don't know they have to be in touch with anybody, simply be... I mean, when do we get in touch with them? We look to fill a position.
Yeah. I don't know if you, you know, with a state park, I imagine you have more access to BOP facilities. I mean, we have, you know, lavatories here. We don't have showers. We don't have... We don't really...
It's primitive camping.
Yeah. That's what it would be.
But it might be primitive camping, but many people might say that's fine. I'm used to primitive camping if I can park my camper here and enjoy the summer in southern Vermont. And I'll go get my water, and I know where to dispose of my waste, and just let me stay here.
Well, you know what? There will be a permit or two that we might have to check into.
I'm suggesting, as opposed to saying, "Well, it's about money. It's... Where can we find volunteers?" It's another option that if it worked and if we found the right people... I'm not suggesting we will. I'm not suggesting that they're easy to find, but they might be.
Are you suggesting you'll work with me to try to pursue this?
Sure.
Okay. You heard him.
Problem solved. Okay.
Karen, one quick question about the parks. Have the rec committee considered changing the closing time from dusk to try to set a park closing time so that when somebody was closing the park, they didn't have that potential conflict going? It's not dusk. I can still see some like that situation if it'd been a problem in the past.
We... No, we did not change... I think it... Now, it says dusk. You're right. We did not change the time on it.
I just... I remember when we talked about this the last time there was some problems.
Right. That's right. We actually... We thought we had something in place, and we did for a while. We actually had a state trooper who was volunteering time to come by in the evening and drive down around the park to be sure that there were no cars coming. And that lasted for a while, and then that person couldn't continue to do it anymore. But no, we did not... We have not revised the signs at this point. We did talk, and I forgot to mention it, we are going to meet with the sheriffs down there when the weather is a little bit better and talk about... Because I did discuss with him cameras, you know? I mean, there are hunting cameras. There's various things you can put down there. Signage, he was... Didn't seem too impressed with the idea of signage. When you start talking about lighting in terms of motion lights, you know, sometimes, according to him, that can invite vandalism. So, you know, it's... But these are things we have not come up with a solution. Maybe we'll find a docent one next summer. We'll keep you posted.
Okay. All right. I thought I'd get the revisions done for proposed conflict of interest policy. If they're not done for tonight, they will be ready for the next Monday meeting. So, we can do that Monday when we talk about... So, with everybody's permission, can we like to table that tonight? All right. The purchasing policy, proposed waiver language for government surplus purchasing. The only thing I want to add to our... Terry and Artie have not come up with the government surplus purchasing policy or plan yet. And since the budget's due, I think we table it indefinitely and really focus our eye on the bond issue, which is more important than maybe the next budget year, we can take up the idea of government surplus purchasing. You okay with that, Karl?
Yes.
Okay. So, Mark, you don't need to do any more of that.
Oh, well, it wasn't... Really, it wasn't going to be that much, but it just doesn't seem like there's any need right now.
Okay. Thank you. All right. For town meeting, we have a variety of things we need to do. We have to approve an agenda. And the first thing I'd like to just mention, I sent out an email, an informational email to board members, but town meeting is not a select board meeting. It's a meeting of the town, and it's, as I was informed when I first started out with the board, it's the moderator's meeting to run, where there is guests to explain the proposed budget and answer questions. But... So, we're not coming up with a full agenda, but we want to make sure that anything that we need to accomplish is on the town meeting agenda. So, the agenda, essentially, the warning, which has two parts. There's the Monday night meeting, and then there's the Australian ballots, which are the second part of the warning. So, let's just focus on, if we can, the Monday night meeting warning. Has everybody had a chance to review the annual meeting warning?
This... This one? I saw it tonight.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you have a feeling? I have been working... I had a couple of conversations Thursday and Friday with Bond Counsel. He's suggesting that since we have to have a legal advertisement that appears consecutively three times between now and March town meeting, that we keep the warning for the bond vote. He suggested a one-page, which I think I forwarded to everybody, that that is going to be the legal ad... Advertisement.
Okay.
And it says that we are gathered... We're going to be gathering together. We're going to be voting on Tuesday to consider this ballot question. Now, the question's been inserted into the town meeting warning. It's question six without the preamble about where, when, because the first part of the town meeting warning, first two paragraphs describe where we're meeting and when and who's voting on what day on what questions. The town meeting warning has been updated with all of the dates for... That should be thirteen. And it's been updated with the community appropriation requests that are in the budget. The town clerk and I have yet to actually approve this together. But...
Okay.
And there's one other question.
Okay.
For the select board consideration as you proceed here, is how to phrase the question on adopting a vote. Question number four.
Okay. So, would everybody take a minute to go back through the... And I just would like to focus on town meeting Monday night first and not the Australian ballot items. We can take this one at a time.
There is no change in any of the proposed stipends or rates?
Yep. On the grain?
Were they approved for five years last year?
Last year? No. It's been five years since the question has been added on the... On the line.
This is the year they came up for. It had expired.
Okay.
Now, would you like that?
I thought they had gone down.
Gone down.
Had lost a vote one year and then succeeded the next.
Succeeded the second time. Yeah, and I remember you saying that it was favorable since the vote had been favorable in recent years. That's why the board agreed to put this on the warrant for the...
Are you sure you're talking about the same, the right thing?
The grain?
Not the reserve fund for the grain. They had requested a reserve.
There were two different... Right.
I don't think it had ever gone down. It had never gone down.
Asset taxes, yeah. Right. I was thinking of the reserve.
Yeah. Do you want that as a separate question and not a sub?
Yes.
Element to two.
Because it's apples and oranges. A through F are all compensation.
Can I just suggest in two A, to be specific, so that there's no question, shall select board members each?
That's a good point.
Should each select board?
Shall select board members each receive?
Yeah.
See anyone there that'd like that?
All right, then on...
Now, number four, is that... Is that number?
Before we... Okay, go ahead.
Well, the amount to be raised by taxes. I thought it was one, three, oh, two.
It's one, three, oh, two, two, fifty-eight.
Yeah. This is one, three, one, three.
Which is the number after you include interest. One, three, one, three, two, five, eight.
Well, but that's not the number one.
Right. I'm just saying, I can see where... It was just pulled from the wrong... It was pulled from line fourteen instead of line nine. Do you want the number?
Yeah. Exactly. One, three, oh, two.
Two, five, eight, two, oh, five. You're backing up... A, B, A and B are separate. So, that could be number three, three A and three B.
Wait a minute. A, two. Are we talking A and B under?
Three.
Under three.
Then we don't need to see because we had this discussion with the town clerk a couple of years ago, that once the town sets the interest rate for taxes, then it stays at that rate until it's changed.
Well, how would they change it if it's not a question on the...
Somebody would have to ask.
We recognize to bring that to the...
Well, you know, it's interesting. I mean, we had this discussion last...
Last year.
Or the year before.
Right.
A motion was made and seconded to levy interest at the rate of one percent per month. After brief discussion, wherein the Plinque noted that this motion clarifies what has always been policy. This is in addition to the eight percent fee collected.
Dislocated.
Plinque explained the one percent interest is assessed after the month is ended. Motion carried by voters, vote. So, I think, you know, the whole reasoning for doing it was for people to understand that this was in addition to the penalty.
I don't... The statute says that the town can set an interest rate other than the statutory rate, and then that rate stays in effect until the town votes to set a new rate. So...
Okay. So, we don't even have to ask the townspeople?
We don't have to ask it unless... There was a belief that the tax, the interest rate had to be set every year. But the statute says that once you set the interest rate, it stays that way, the second ordinance.
Right.
Until the voters vote to set a new interest rate. So, it seems to me that it's been one percent for years, and we don't need to vote on it every year.
Okay. So, you're proposing that we take that out?
Take it out.
I don't have a problem with that.
Karl?
I have no problem, assuming that's accurate.
So, should the question on the grange become something under three?
It should be number three.
It'll become question three.
Okay. And then question four will be these two items for the treasurer. And then item five should be about borrowing.
Wait a minute. I'm confused. I'm mixed up here. So, two is A, B, C, D, E, F.
Those are all...
Right. And then three is...
The grange.
Shall the town vote to exempt the grange? Then number four is to determine A and B.
A and B.
And what about D?
That's number five.
D becomes five.
That becomes five.
Because it's a separate item, different than raising taxes or interest on delinquent taxes.
Okay. And then what are we doing with?
Four is number six.
That would be number six.
And...
Five is number seven.
Right.
Okay. Got it. Thanks. Now, the question?
Then I think for the next day, shouldn't you just renumber things? Begin with one?
Yeah, we think it would start over then. We haven't done that in... We haven't done that in the past.
Okay.
But if we're gonna pause?
I mean, it just seems like it's...
And we may have to change all those numbers. I know, it seems kind of...
It's a different day.
I haven't messed with the format that has been in place for years.
Okay. All right, so...
I didn't take that on.
Okay, let's leave it the same.
Uh... It does seem kind of silly, though.
It does.
I mean, people might look and say, wait a minute, number six, what happened to one through five?
I agree.
Uh, I, I, I would propose that we check with Judy or somebody, and see if there's a reason that we can't just number those in a more sensible way.
Okay. Think that makes sense. Okay, um...
So the question on top of page two, Lon?
Yeah, I think we need to decide that...
What language we want, because the question we've asked in the past, shall the town of Shafter adopt the general fund budget for fiscal year 2013 as proposed? That was the format of the question that we would ask the year to year, and now, uh...
The Secretary of State suggests?
Right.
That we should either vote on the rate, or vote on the amount to be raised by taxes. Shall the voters approve a fiscal year 2014 budget?
There is better language than this, this little more, it's just, it's just, um...
Do you have it with you, or?
No.
Okay.
I was hoping that Rob, Wilmington, could give me a call back in the morning.
So, if we, um, if we ask them to approve a number, like the number we have in here, and then on town meeting night, they say, no, we don't like that, we'll just pick a number, that twenty thousand dollar appropriation for whatever, um, and they, you know, the, on town meeting night, they say, we want that out, and they vote it out, then we're essentially bound to collect more?
No.
If we have that number in there that includes the twenty thousand?
No. What they would vote on, they would say, I wanted to amend item, let's use the current number four, so it's not confusing.
Yeah.
Somebody would make a motion that they would amend that number to be, uh, one million two hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, by removing twenty thousand dollars for widgets from the budget.
Yeah.
So that's how they'd make the motion.
Okay, so...
They would reduce the amount to be raised by taxes by saying, we want this, we don't want to pay for this item in the budget.
Okay, so essentially, this line item can be changed? Based on whatever, in other words, it'll be shall be, and, you know, someone will put the motion forward, second, discuss, and it could be then amended to whatever. So, um, so then what's the problem of putting in our, the number that we're proposing?
Uh, I, I think the problem you have when you say, adopt the budget, it's interpreted as you can only spend every single line item as described, whereas, in reality, we...
Oh, right.
The select board has to have the flexibility to manage the budget?
Yes.
And to adapt to changes in circumstances as they come along.
Yes.
For example, we increased the chloride budget when we had a particularly hot, dry summer.
Right.
And the, and we were getting complaints all over town, and we had excess money in other areas. So we increased the amount of chloride we bought above and beyond the budget.
So what are you proposing, just giving reference to fiscal year 2014?
Uh, shall the voters approve, um, raising taxes in the amount of one million, three hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars?
To fund?
To support the fiscal year 2014 budget. Something, something like that.
That gives you the same thing.
Right. In years past, we had no number in the warning. What we had in the warning is, shall the voters approve the fiscal year 2014 budget as presented? Maybe we...
Well, shall the town of Shafter adopt the general fund budget for fiscal year 2013 as proposed? So I can see why there would be that question of, okay, you proposed that this was what you were going to spend for the highway garage, and now you've gone way over budget, that's not the way you proposed it. I, I can see how you could potentially have that concern.
Yeah. We, one year, we spent twenty-seven thousand dollars above our budget for overtime.
Right, right.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question, if you use the language fiscal year 2014 budget, whether you put it in the beginning of the sentence or at the end of the sentence, you're still locking yourself into that budget.
No, you're, the, what they're approving is the amount to be raised by taxes for the budget.
That should be the motion made on, on the floor.
Right.
I still, I still don't see anything wrong, wrong with this wording as, as you have it here. Shall the voters approve fiscal year 2014 budget?
Yeah.
Which requires that, you know, our amount, X amount, be raised in property taxes to fund...
Yeah, anyway, you say to approve the budget, you're still asking them to approve the budget, so they could come back and say you didn't approve the budget.
Right. What I'm suggesting is the emphasis be on the dollar amount. So approve...
Shall voters raise? Raise in property taxes, X in property taxes, in support of the proposed fiscal year fourteen budget.
Right, so they're approving the amount?
To fund?
For that budget.
I would then suggest maybe you add to support funding as set forth, or funding of a budget, of a proposed budget. So again, you're emphasizing more the dollars as opposed to the budget itself.
I, I agree completely. That's exactly what we're trying to accomplish. Well, um, we got the...
Yeah.
We got the language from the Secretary of State in the last opinion piece.
I'll go look for that, Judy, just about that.
Can I propose one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, shall the voters approve raising property taxes in the amount of one million, three so-and-so-and-so, to fund municipal and highway operations in support of the funding, in support of funding within the budget, or within the FY fiscal year 2014 budget?
Like, the raising of?
To raise?
One million, three oh three, two fifty-eight?
To fund?
Three oh two.
To fund general and highway?
Yeah, municipal and highway operations.
Operations for fiscal year 2014.
Let me type it up, maybe we can get that as...
But just, just give me one second.
Yeah?
You could cut it off right where you said, raise one million, three hundred and three thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars for municipal and highway?
Operations.
Operations for fiscal year 2014.
That's what he just, yeah.
Period. Period.
Yeah, right, right.
And I think we're there.
All right, good.
I think the other language at the end was...
Yeah, don't need it.
Yeah, but you got right there when you...
Okay, good.
Do you have that, Marty?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Okay, and then, um, the, the other question I had is, um, should we, two years ago, we created the, the Fund Balance Reserve Fund, and we were starting to fund that. And the policy at that point, um, was for unanticipated and emergency-type expenses. And the treasurer has recommended that we also be able to use the fund balance for, to meet cash flow needs, uh, to reduce borrowing. That is, if you have two hundred thousand, and you can pay some of your bills with that, and the taxes come in and replenish it, you've eliminated some borrowing.
Right.
If you don't touch the fund balance in anticipation of taxes, you go to the bank, you get the money, and then you pay interest to the bank. So, we have the option of amending our, our, um, Fund Balance Reserve Fund language to allow more flexibility in the, in what the fund balance is used for. And I think we, the voters approved that language, um...
It was the year before last.
The year before last.
It was the year before last, when we set it up. And what, do you happen to have the language?
I can run, yeah, I can run right down. The minutes are in here, for this prior meeting.
Yep, yep.
Was it last year or the year before?
Maybe it was, so you think it was 2010? Is it not there?
I think it may have been the year before.
Yeah, it must be.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I think, I think we should include an article if people want to follow the treasurer's recommendation, uh, because my, my recollection of the language, it was fairly restrictive on the use of the fund balance, and we couldn't use it to meet cash flow needs in anticipation of taxes.
Oh, we, we...
Right.
Yes.
Yes, we were very, very...
Yeah, I guess we were, because it really, the idea was if there were emergencies, that was really the...
Right. Right, and the treasurer seems to be of the opinion that you don't spend it without, um, authorization, that is, like we're doing with the, um, intergovernmental funds.
Yeah, yeah.
We're, we're spending it and not replenishing it. He's saying you use the fund balance for cash, temporary cash flow needs, the idea that it's gonna be...
Go back in there.
Right.
So instead of borrowing on it?
Right.
Yeah.
From yourself.
Right, right.
So what we would do is ask the, ask the, um, the people at town meeting to approve an amendment to the language, because the first night, they create the fund, and the second night, or the second day, they fund the fund. And now?
Right.
It's already been funded. So the second question becomes, should we incorporate the, the de facto balance into the fund reserve? If we amend the language?
I, I, you lost me. What defundo balance?
Well, de facto balance.
De facto.
I mean, we've got this three hundred and twenty thousand, but we've also created a reserve fund. I'm just thinking, it's, it's crazy to have two different reserve funds.
Yeah, it is. I mean, that's why we even talked this year about not even funding that fund balance reserve.
And we haven't.
No, I know it.
So...
Because we realized we had such, you know, we were asking the townspeople without understanding how much, and, you know, it's one of the reasons, frankly, that this whole change in, from modified to, you know, where we are at this point in our, our accounting system, has clarified a lot. And this is certainly one of the things that's clarified, and, you know, we've gone out twice now asking the townspeople to fund what we were thinking of as an emergency fund. Um, and, you know, I mean, it was one of the reasons when we saw what was there, what has accumulated, because we keep, you know, what I know we have done over the last several years is take what were surpluses and apply it towards the budget, but then we were still under budget. So, you know, the surplus ended up not really getting applied, because we, we were holding our budget not only to the line, but under the line, and, which was contributing to additional fund balances, which, you know, is a happy place to be right now, but, um... We certainly don't want to be asking people to fund it when we have that, that large of fund balances.
Okay, shall the voters establish a fund balance reserve fund in an amount never to exceed five percent of the general and highway fund balance to cover unanticipated revenue short, shortfalls, or to pay non-recurring, unanticipated general and highway fund expenses?
Or, sorry, sorry, or to pay what?
Non-recurring and unanticipated?
Okay, yeah.
General highway fund expenses.
Could you just read that again, because you said five percent of the highs of the fund balance?
Of our fund balance.
Did you mean the budget? Five percent of the budget? Could you just read it from, in the beginning again?
Okay. Shall the voters establish a fund balance reserve fund in an amount never to exceed five percent of the general and highway fund budget?
Budget, okay.
To cover unanticipated revenue shortfalls, or to pay non-recurring and unanticipated general and highway fund expenses. The treasurer's recommending that it not exceed closer to fifteen percent rather than five percent. And our fund balance right now is a little over eleven percent. Uh, if we spend the hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Right.
It's closer to eighteen, seventeen percent if we include the hundred and twenty.
Right. But this is a, this is a different type of... Oh, boy.
I think the simplest thing to do is to amend the reserve fund at town meeting, to change the amount from five to fifteen percent. That's consistent with the treasurer's recommendation, ten, somewhere between ten and fifteen percent should be held in reserve. And that we allow it to, um, allow a little bit more flexibility in the use of the funds.
Right, we'll have to come up with the language for that, but it certainly makes sense when you, you know, if we're holding that amount of money, that you make it useful when you're not needing it, um, to, you know, to kind of get you, bridge you, bridge you to your tax, to your tax revenue.
Yeah.
Rather than going out and spending money to...
Use another budget for...
To be using that as a bridge, to be using it to save money.
What's that? That's how, that's what Fenton does, just as a FYI.
So Lon, do we need to finalize boarding tonight? Is that all we're doing? When do we have to finalize the morning?
I have to post, uh, I'd like to post by February second, it has to finalize by February third. So we're gonna, hopefully, signing on Monday night, the twenty-eighth. Need to finalize it.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, so that I can post.
So we should come up with, yeah, I don't want to do that. So we need to come up, we need to add this as an agenda item?
Yeah, and I think that, I'm hoping that either by, maybe even by Wednesday night, which we need to talk about, special meeting that we're gonna be having anyway.
Yeah. Okay, so, um... We'll come up with some language. If you have some proposed language, Carl, Billy, Karen, per item, um, for this item, it's in the, um, 2010 town report on page 13. Item 2G.
I didn't have a copy of my report with me, sorry.
I can get it.
Okay.
What, so it's unanimous that we want to have the question on, though?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. And basically, we're gonna amend the, um, fund balance reserve policy. Okay. Are there any other items that need to be addressed? At town meeting?
Yeah.
Oh, we, I'm sorry. These are all voted articles, right?
Correct.
Okay, is there any place where we can have the presentation? Is that all under number one, is the, uh...
To hear the reports of town officers.
Would that include the presentation on the, uh...
Now, uh, but the question I would ask, sort of an amended question, would be, are you confirming the February 25th Australian ballot informational meeting? That was a suggestion in the schedule, that MSK would have deliverables for that meeting and be available to present.
Yeah, I think we need that.
And, uh, it's out of the context of a floor meeting, so I think it can be very topically focused.
Okay, I was thinking about something else, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, so would you...
So, the...
Would you just reiterate that?
The Australian ballot informational meeting would be suggested to be the Monday night preceding, uh...
February 25th?
The floor meeting.
Yeah, right. But should we have that language listed as an Australian ballot, as part of the Australian ballot?
The vote on the bond?
No, yes, do we have to have the, this language about the informational meeting in the warning?
I think so, because I, I think it's helpful, because, um, that's going to be published three times? Is that the one you're saying?
Oh, I have the individual, and I'm not gonna be, but I'm not publishing this whole warning. I'm gonna be publishing a separate warning.
But I'm talking about this, and he, that's what he's asking about right now.
In the warning that goes in the book.
Oh, in that one.
In the, in the town report.
Right, should we report that here we have the article about the bond vote? And it's three paragraphs, the first two are about, the, the first paragraph's about the bond, the second paragraph is that there aren't, um, town monies available. Third paragraph, instead of being about the vote, talks about the informational meeting. Should we have that there, since it's really not part of the vote?
Oh, about the, that last paragraph about the informational meeting?
Yeah.
No, you're right, let's not do that. Because this will be voted on afterwards.
Right.
That's in, yeah, the informational meeting language came from, this is what's gonna be running in the paper.
Right, we want to be sure that's in the paper.
No, this does not.
Because that gives them notice of the February 25th meeting.
And we can put the, um, advertisement about the informational meeting right at the top of the special section on the bond vote in the town report.
Right.
So, it will be in the town report, but just not part of the ballot article? Is that okay with everyone?
Sure.
Okay.
So, uh, that has actually become question eight. Shall the bonds of the town of Shasprey in an amount not to exceed blank? The issue for the purpose of construction of a new Shasprey town garage? That item becomes just two paragraphs.
Either that, or it becomes item number one.
Right.
If we're renumbering.
Right, can I ask one question about the second paragraph? What was the thinking about adding this language about, um, state funds are not available, and if they were available, we'd apply for them?
That came out of council.
Right, did he?
He didn't explain, he's gonna explain it to Wednesday night.
Okay.
I suspect.
Okay.
Just a question, for purposes of, of the shall paragraph, should we identify where that new town garage and related infrastructure is located?
Uh, we're gonna have a four-page informational piece, uh, towards the beginning of the, uh, the book, so all those facts will be, um, laid out.
That's what the whole, the informational meeting is about, and, I mean, you know, when they're voting on numbers, we're not giving them details in terms of the budget, for instance. You know, will you support a budget of X amount of money? It just, I mean, we're giving them the amount of money to be bonded. I, I don't think we need to get into descriptives in the actual...
No, because they're only, they're only authorizing borrowing.
Right.
Every, everything else is, um, based on what we've represented, we're gonna do with the money. And that, that should be spelled out in detail in the other pages of the town report that are devoted to the bond issue. Okay, other comments about the town, uh, the annual meeting warning? Margie, thank you very much for putting all this together.
Thank you, Margie.
It's a pleasure. Not really, I like this. This is governance, but it's, this is what we're all about.
Okay, um, besides the paperwork, we have to talk about the presentation. My understanding is we're planning on, um, Jim Secor and MSK making a presentation about the bond. We'll do the usual, uh, presentation about the budget. I'll start working on that in February. We have to do, uh, special recognitions. Since it's always nice to surprise people, if you could send me any ideas you have for special recognitions, I'd appreciate that. Are there any other items or issues that you think should be part of the town meeting present, uh, presentation?
Just if, you know, I think in turn, we've, it's been kind of fun to have the slideshow over the last few years. We have some photographs from the culminating event for our 250th.
If anybody has any pictures, just send them my way.
Yeah.
Mitch, could you help us with that?
Yeah.
But different people have taken pictures of any boredom to you, or Norm Bronning, or any of the other organizers.
Yeah, I think we can...
Could you help us just by getting the word out, Mitch? That'd be great. And then, um... Yeah, if you could get them to, uh, Margie at, uh, the town administrator. Would that be okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, that'd be great. Okay, anything else about town meeting? Okay, uh, town administrators' report?
Well, this is, I think, pretty evident that this is what's been taking up my time most recently. I did wanna, there are a couple of slides that I wanted to let people know about, um... Uh, let's see, uh... We are overlapping right now, uh, with road crew, we do have new road crew member in training, while we are getting ready to say farewell to, uh, Tony Myers, uh, whose last day with the Shasprey road crew will be February 1st, that Friday. And, uh, we are going to be, probably this coming week, getting underway to recertify the transfer station and our landfill. I've worked with an engineer, uh, in the past to do an inspection, we're supposed to do annually, so I'll be taking that on. Still helping the listers investigate what we can do about, uh, switching vendors for their mapping needs. Uh, we had a nice meeting with, uh, Rob Phaley and Nelson Blanchard about, uh, this is just a subgroup of concerned citizen, uh, Karen was there, I was there, uh...
Larry Johnson.
Larry Johnson from the school district, school board, uh, to take up the issue of pedestrian safety at the 7A and Church Street intersection again. Yeah, we've already petitioned the state for reduction of speed limit through the village, from 35 to 25. Tim Scoggins has taken a look additionally at some other alternatives in follow-up to correspondence with the state of Vermont, uh, to stripe or, uh, change out the signalization here, to make it crystal clear that we really want people to slow down. So, we had a couple, well, a schematic that we forwarded to one of the traffic engineers with V-Trans, to see what their feedback is regarding that suggestion. And, uh, we took delivery of a new rescue pumper, uh, last week in a scramble to get the final payments and all that organized. We had 20-some people at a emergency preparedness training session. It was not this past Thursday, but a week ago, Thursday. We're trying to get as many elected officials trained in basic incident command protocols as possible. There's another, another level, ICS 200, that we're hoping, hoping SLUC Board members and, and a few other officials will, uh, take part in. I found the training very useful, very useful. I had taken the same training, uh, several years in the past, but this was far better. I think the presenter was excellent in that he was, uh, a member of the Burlington Fire Department, but has taken on many more responsibilities on behalf of the state of Vermont, and, and regionally, and was a responder, I believe, in 9/11, but he also has helped with incident preparedness in the wake of Katrina, et cetera, et cetera. And if you think that it was something to orchestrate in an inaugural address, you said just wait, do you think, find out what they have to plan for, for the State of the Union? For that, that's the number one incident planning event in this country. So, that was really it, the group 7A, emergency management, and a new fire truck.
Okay, any questions for, uh, Margie? Okay, other business, Billy?
Uh, just two things, DRB has finished interviewing candidates for their position, prepared to forward their recommendations onto the board. I haven't seen them yet, but I spoke to Megan Dockers as we passed on our way in that call hall last week, and she said that they would be coming forth shortly, and that she is going to, uh, get the CD copies of all the interviews, so if any of us want to hear any of the interviews, so that we understand anything in the recommendation, that we'll have access to that.
Did, did you receive her, um...
Should've.
Email of Friday? That had the, um, each DRB member's, um...
Summary.
A summary of each DRB member's, um, thoughts about particular candidates?
I don't recall seeing it. But, so, I guess when you see my name on the, uh...
No, I don't. I'm, I don't see the, I, I thought it went to the full board.
I did too.
I made an assumption.
Okay, well, then I guess that answers one question, so if we don't have final recommendations, then we can't interview people Wednesday night?
They are, well, I think they are the recommendations. But instead of giving us, like, what the board thinks as a whole, they've given us individual board members.
Okay. So, I will...
Do we have interviews, interviews set up for us, or...
Well, that was, the intent was to, uh, I didn't find that we were gonna have everybody in attendance until I walked in and checked my email this morning. So, uh, bond counsel is ready and available to be here on either side, probably on the early side. We started right at 6:00 with him, and then we could have interviews, but I need to let people know ASAP if... This was, this was the intent of a special meeting.
Okay, I've just emailed it to, to everyone. Can you pull it up? And take a quick look at it?
Billy doesn't have his computer.
I don't have my computer on.
Carl has his, but his battery may be down.
No, I'm good.
Oh.
Can you show it to Bill?
And I can make it.
What am I pulling up here?
The email we'll just forward it to.
Oh, you want me to just...
So, Craig has said that even though he couldn't make it tonight, he would be available Wednesday night. So, everybody is available. I had been, and obviously these folks have had the impression that a five-member board has two alternates. Is that, that is...
That was how we structured everything, whatever, yes.
So, yeah, but you know what the feelings of the individual board members are? Who does the board want to interview?
Out of the seven people that applied, it appears that if we went through all of the different board members' recommendations, six of them have been recommended to us by one or more board members.
Well, I couldn't tell from the chair whether she was recommending or just...
Commenting.
Commenting.
That was, my assumption that that was, that that was her recommendation because she only commented on...
In order of, you know, in terms of how she...
It appears to me, from looking at this, almost like different members had different, different perspectives. I don't know, I've seen any DRB members here, but it seems like two members gave us, here's my recommendation for full position, here's my recommendation for alternate, you know, pretty clear-cut that you know what their vision of the board is. And then it appears that two members gave us, kind of, this is what I'm thinking about people who applied, as if, as if they were anticipating us interviewing and just wanting to give some input into that process.
It's not clear to me whose comments from this format, from the chair and then afterwards...
I think the chair is making comments.
Okay.
Yeah.
About, okay.
I think, I think, unless that's, unless...
Yeah, that's right.
I, I'm not quite sure.
So it's really only...
Unless that's her composition of everybody's opinions, or is that just her...
Must be, so it's one, two, three, four recommendations from four people.
It looks like she listed each board member and then what their thoughts were, so...
Yes, and then, but from when her name appears on the email, from there to the end of the email are her comments.
Those are her reflections on...
And that would make sense to me.
Based upon this, I mean, I'm not, honestly, I'm not really sure how to limit the interviews because there's such a diverse range of comments on one side, and then on the other side, that there seems to be a group of people almost disqualified by a few board members because of conflict that they see that'll happen within the board, but there's not, there's not much explanation for that, so I don't...
I, I feel I could whittle it down because we've interviewed Jennifer Bierek twice in the last year and a half. So, I don't, I don't feel the need to interview her again. I would like to interview Jay Palmer. And Mitch Race and Michael Biddy.
Just Jay, or did you say someone else?
Uh, three.
I didn't hear the other two.
Jay Palmer, Mitch Race, and Michael Biddy. The only reason I don't name Jennifer Bierek is because we, the board's seen her extensively, and we've had two separate interviews with her for the zoning of the minister's position, and then after that for the alternate, for the appointment of the DRB. So, I, I would simply not interview her because I feel like we've already done so, not so long ago. It's pretty fresh in my mind.
Do you think with the fact that she's now served as a mem, you know, she's been an alternate on the DRB, but she's sat in on quite a few cases, do you think that having done that, that she would have...
Right, I think, I think I would like to. I think it would because it's a different composition of the board at this point. We have a reduced membership number.
Okay.
I don't really feel the need to interview Jennifer. I feel very fresh in my mind what she said.
Well, if Karen would like to interview her, I, I think we should defer to her. That's, I'm, I'm okay with that. Are the board members okay with interviewing the other three? Or would we rule any of them out or add anyone else?
Uh, the only other thing I'd, you know, I'd point out there is that it appears that if I'm reading this email correctly, that both Megan, the chair, and Tom have, have supported that they would at least consider Mike Pauling and Kathy Januslaw. So should we, should we interview them, or should we request the find from, from Chris and David why they didn't include them?
Well, if, if you want to interview them, like, I'm happy to add them to the list. It's really up to you.
I guess where I would leave it is if I'm the only person that wants to interview them, then that would probably be pointless. So, you know, I guess throw that out there for the other members of the board.
Well, we have four people now, and we're hoping to do this when, on when?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Okay, so we have to let these folks know. You know, I think I would agree with Billy. I mean, these folks have gone to the, you know, they've taken the step of coming forward and, and I agree that there appear to be two members who are saying they would consider these folks, so...
Okay.
I mean, we know we have a fairly, sort of a, not a real veteran board at this point, so I think whatever help we can give in terms of any observations, and I can't have any unless I talk to them.
Well, the two we're adding have been regulars at our meeting and regularly ask questions or, we have these, so I think we do have, it's, they're not strangers to this select board, but we'll add them.
Can I suggest to...
No, I was meaning more that we have a DRB board that is...
I know, but the purpose of the interview is to, is to decide who we're going to appoint, so if you want to consider them in the running, and you want to interview them, that's fine.
I don't have a problem with interviewing as many people as we want, as long as the chair will make sure that we don't go over a certain number of minutes per interview. Wherever we are, cut it off at ten or fifteen minutes.
I was going to suggest that you may have people that are not available Wednesday night, so you may want to continue these till Monday as well, the twenty-eighth or not.
No, we're gonna, we're gonna get them all, as many as we can get in Wednesday, and if there's a reason that Wednesday's impossible, then we'll consider taking somebody Monday, but Monday's not going to be available unless the circumstances demand it. Okay, so let's see if we can get them all done, because we're running out of time. And I think a couple of folks recommended that we get these appointments done, and then consider the second alternate for that more than once, and then email, get the second alternate appointed when you do the regular appointment, new appointments in March.
Beginning of April.
Okay, Billy, any, anything else?
Um, no, that, that piece, and, just everybody knows this is the, this year coming up is the year that the planning commissioner will get the town plan, so...
And they want to be on the agenda.
I know Chris is going to plan on addressing us at some point in the future to come up.
It would have been tonight. And I totally forgot, so it's February fourth.
Yeah.
If that meets our schedule.
Yeah, the, yeah. Want to do it at the, at the next reg, regular meeting. Okay. You know, Chris, Chris and I have been talking about, so that's going to be approached, that's going to be on the agenda. Carl?
Uh, yeah, just one thing, as you, as we were walking through the fire stations this evening, something came up that I think is worth noting, specifically because I feel that the board has been put on notice of what the fire chief suggested could be a hazardous situation based on falling ice or snow from the roof of the fire station on Buck Hill Road. And I suggest, he, he has said that he has attempted to put out cones and yellow tape to keep cars away from there, but without any explanation apparently of why they can't park there, and people ignoring it, and I understand during normal events that parking is a premium. Nonetheless, he used the word liability, and we are on now actual notice of his concerns. I suggest, unless there's a better suggestion, that we do whatever we need to do to have signs put up on that side of the building that say caution, falling ice, something comparable, so that at least people are put on notice, because we now are on actual notice of what he already said is a hazardous situation.
Okay. Can we ask the highway department to post some signs there? And since it's school property, just let the principal know that we are going to be posting them right where people park, not in the asphalt.
I was assuming they'd be posted on the building, on our building.
I thought the risk was on the west side of the building.
Yes.
Wherever the snow's falling off the roof.
Right. And so, my suggestion is rather than putting it up on the building, if you put it on a sign right where the people park, you're going to put the nose of the car right where the sign is.
If that's our property, then we can do it, sure.
Yeah. I don't think the school would object if it's going to keep somebody from getting hurt, but I, but I think it might be more obvious.
That's fine.
If it's on school property, then we probably have to wait for a couple meetings.
If it's on school property, I suggest we put it on the, on the side of the building. Something is better than nothing.
Something, on the building, we can do that more quickly.
I think the principal can approve that. I, I don't think it's that big a deal, because we're not going to interfere with their parking or whatever.
Right.
But if Terry could just get the signs that are durable, street-type signs.
That's it.
Yeah, okay, great. Karen?
No.
Other business, Marky?
Except I'd like to ask Mitch Race and Jay Palmer, could you be available Wednesday?
Six o'clock.
Bond Counsel afterwards?
No, what time is Bond Counsel?
Six.
Six thirty-five.
Six thirty, six thirty, and then say ten of seven.
Quarter to one. Fifteen minutes.
Okay. I have Mitch, six thirty, I have Jay, six forty-five. Thank you.
Okay, other business, I'm, I'm on page three of my five-page budget notes, and I had a couple of questions about the budget. I'm not sure my notes were accurate, and just need the rest of the board to weigh in. I know the COPS grant expires eleven thirty thirteen, and so the remaining seven months, were we, were we going to maintain the same number of hours for the sheriff's department, or had we decreased it?
It's at ten, we had been at ten hours a week, we added ten with the, the grant.
Right.
Which is a little twenty a week.
And we, we're basically buying, with the extra seventeen hundred dollars, we're buying another fifty, I think fifty-five hours over thirty weeks.
What line item was mine?
Yeah.
Oh, I have to get my notes from other years.
I remember the discussion, and I remember you... I'm trying to figure that out based on the...
It's nine eighty-four and twenty-five fifty.
Because it was really, we were only looking for, because it ends on December first, right? Is it December one?
Oh, no, November thirtieth.
November, yeah.
Same thing, but you know, you...
Yeah.
We're in the same place. So, my guess is the additional money is buying about fifty-five hours over thirty weeks. So it seems like we were only buying another hour and a half.
So we went back down to ten hours a week.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, fifty, say that again?
Over three hundred hours.
If we've got thirty weeks...
I took the difference between the approved budget for this year and the amount that we budgeted for two thousand fourteen, and then I divided that by twenty-five fifty to come up with the total number of hours that are purchased at the retail rate, so to speak, and I came up with fifty-five hours.
Can I get back to you in the morning? Because I've got my notes downstairs.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think you needed to clarify that, because I had a system, yeah.
So I thought we were buying more time than that, but that was just based on all these recollection.
More time than what we already have?
No, more time than it looks like when I did the math.
Oh.
So, I just wanted to...
Yeah, I mean, when I...
My notes aren't as clear as I'd like them to be, so I'd like some feedback on that.
Yeah, I think that's...
And the other one I want to feedback on... Uh, do we have the, the generator memorandum of understanding and... the generator memorandum of understanding in place by town meeting?
Yes, I think we can.
Who, who's taking initiative on that?
Me.
Oh, okay.
That's the VA sign.
I've been in touch with the, yeah, I've been in touch with the school. Townel doesn't, never actually had one, it was in their minutes, but but I've been in touch with Fran Kenny and Rick Pembroke and sort of waiting for everybody to get through their own intense budget stuff. To put a little time into it.
Okay. All right, that's it for other business then. Minutes for December twenty-second, two thousand and twelve, it was a special meeting.
Now, those, we're just, just sending out, they're very abbreviated.
They say we're a budget work session, right?
Yeah, we said that, yeah.
Yes. I can read them out loud.
Second.
Send them.
Oh, I can't second, I wasn't.
I wasn't there either.
I'll second it.
On the sidewalk construction.
Well, if they can't vote, you know, they can't.
You have to have the majority vote. Wait, for December twenty-second, it says that Billy was there.
So I don't, that was a Saturday.
I was not there on a Saturday.
So you were not there, okay.
No.
All right. So we would need Lon, Craig, and Karen.
So I guess that's a correction for the minutes.
All right, so I have to insert the timing of sidewalk construction activities. Well, the word sidewalk has to be inserted into that.
Oh, oh, oh.
Very short paragraph, and then it lists the warrants that were approved.
All right, well, we'll have to take them up with the next.
All right, so those we have to do.
January seventh, two thousand and thirteen, it was our first regular meeting of the month.
You missed one, because we had another meeting Thursday evening, December twenty-seventh.
It's not warranted. We'll take those up.
We still can't.
Let's take them up Monday. January seventh, two thousand and thirteen.
I don't know that I saw that.
We have to do January third.
We haven't drawn that one either. Let's do this, let's, given the hour, let's take it up on Wednesday. Okay, is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, agree.
All right. Warrants. We got a hundred million of them.
A hundred billion, Lord, I hope not.
Okay. Have you seen all the warrants? Okay. We have check warrant nineteen for one thousand four hundred dollars to see our lawn service.
That is a rough rush, because that has, that's the bucket for the surplus loader that we have in, that we're working on right now.
Okay.
That I yet to have seen a purchase order for.
Say that again, it's the what? How much is that?
We have a piece of surplus equipment that came, Army surplus. And.
The dump truck?
No, it's, no, it's something that happened, I think you must have talked with Terry about this when I was sick.
No.
December twenty-second or whatever.
No.
Well, there's a piece of equipment.
What is it?
It's here, it's, it's a loader. That was approved. It was a big bucket.
It's a big fuck.
I think Craig must have known about this, I mean.
How much was it?
But I've asked him for, I think it was under five hundred dollars, five hundred or something. What?
Didn't, didn't Mom just say a thousand something?
Yeah, for, it's for the bucket, fourteen hundred dollars for a bucket.
Yeah.
For the actual bucket itself?
Yes.
Oh, oh. We don't have a new wheelie kind of equipment, it's, it's a piece that goes on to.
A new piece of equipment.
Our loader. It's a bucket that goes on to the loader, is that what you mean?
She, Margie's saying we, that they got a new loader.
I, well, I'm not, no, I'm really confused.
All right, we can't approve this until we know what this is all about.
Well, we know.
Well, the check, it was an emergency, the check's already gone.
Oh.
Check's already gone.
Yes.
And it was for a purchase of just the bucket, not the loader.
Well, I want to call Terry.
No, no, we're not going to do that.
But well, maybe they spray painted the excavator gray. And are repainting it, I think they're repainting it. I'm so sorry.
I mean, that sounds like maybe the bucket broke, or the.
Yeah.
Or it was, and we needed a new bucket, that's, that's different from, I thought we had a, like, a new backhoe out there from the Army.
Can I have the motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is it?
A bucket.
It's a bucket.
For a bucket loader.
Do we have something that we, that we'll use a bucket loader?
Yes.
Then let's, nope, I have no problem.
We have a John Deere loader. Okay, there being no further discussion, all those in favor of approving check warrant nineteen, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any extensions, any opposed? Motion carries. Then we have this check warrant doesn't have a number.
I know, I, I noticed that, I don't know how, why Billy doesn't have it.
And oh, no, this is, this is the purchase we approved, the
Is that four thousand?
Yeah, the truck. Yep, we had a pickup die, and the board approved him replacing with the used pickup from Harrington.
Yep.
So this is a check warrant for the purchase of a pickup truck, it's four thousand dollars. This expenditure was approved by the board at a special meeting. The, I'm going to call the date of the meeting up there. This was approved. Can I have a motion?
Much to approve.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving a warrant for four thousand dollars for the purchase of a pickup truck, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions? Okay. Then there is the payroll warrant twenty-eight for nine thousand six hundred and forty dollars and twelve cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving payroll warrant twenty-eight, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, Terry unanimously. Then we have it's a retirement warrant twenty-one for two hundred and fifty-four dollars and sixty-eight cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, Terry unanimously. Did I forget to sign that last one?
Yeah, yeah, I'll send it back.
Okay, we have check warrant twenty-one for fifty-one thousand, three hundred and three dollars and fifteen cents. Have a motion to approve?
Sorry.
Okay. Uh, there are approximately five thousand dollars in sell purchases. Payment to the sheriff's, or Blue Cross Blue Shield, seventy-nine hundred dollars. Twenty-five hundred dollars to the sheriff's department, Green Mountain Howard got eleven hundred. Howard Harrington got a thousand dollars.
Howard Harrington?
Yep.
He's the gym teacher at the school. Let's make sure he didn't
Yeah, I'll check that.
Do a school payment instead of.
Why would we be paying him individually?
HL fuels at thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty-eight hundred dollars for fuel. A thousand dollars to co-file preservation.
Land records preservation.
Air assessor, or no, mountain air assessor was about a thousand dollars, the other one was five hundred. Fourteen hundred to the fire company, that's a reimbursement.
Fourteen hundred?
Reimbursement for what?
That is the expenses to go and inspect the fire engine.
Okay. About twelve thousand dollars to tan, it looks like the management.
Twelve thousand?
Contract for two different months.
They built two months their way in arrears.
And Toine got forty-four hundred and eighty dollars.
Toine for what?
That's the balance owed on the rescue pumper.
Oh, okay.
The escrow amount was short, four thousand four hundred and eighty. And I know exactly why, we had a savings on the chassis, and Joe thought that that would be passed on. But the equipment agreement that we signed with Toine was for the full three oh six eight eighty. And that's what we're obligated for.
And then the Department of Corrections. Set up for maybe for eleven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Signs. That was supposed to be a huge sign order, many, many, many missing road signs.
Yeah, they just took ours down this weekend.
Okay, give me just one second, Larry, because I don't want to muddle. Firehouse maintenance. Is where it was.
That's why, it was one of Joe's bills.
For Howard Harrington?
Yep, that's how it was.
Posted?
Posted.
Yeah, he does do like painting and drywall contracting, I mean, that's what he did before he was a teacher.
Right.
You know, he made a job for them, because they just, they just did all that painting.
Yeah, I thought they did it, yeah.
That's what I thought about two minutes ago.
Okay, here it is. It's interesting, it's a drywall ceiling and upper wall repair at the North Shousebury Fire Station. So we just saw that tonight, that's where they painted the bay. This was billed January fifteenth. Well, it's just approved. Total bill was a thousand dollars, he gave the donation back to the department of a hundred and twenty dollars. So it's probably eleven hundred and twenty, and he donated a hundred and twenty dollars at his time. Okay, so any questions, discussion? There being none, all those in favor of approving check warrant twenty-one, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any extensions, Terry unanimously. Okay, are people all set for tonight?
All set for tonight, oh, there was something more to be said for. Are we all finished?
Are we finished?
Oh, I am.
Carol?
Done.
Billy? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Margie.